6:02, let's begin the Brownborough Planning Commission meeting of February 5. Let's start with the minutes from last meeting. Is there any corrections that is to make?
Is there time to bring it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the only, we were talking before the meeting, the only comment is that there wasn't really a working group. So what I said was, you know, I'd love to be on this panel, but I'm there to learn. I'm not there because I necessarily have a passion about the issue and I don't want to take somebody's position. So if there's an open position, I certainly will give it a responsible effort, but you know, if there isn't, if there's just one position, I know Sarah wanted to do it, then I certainly don't want to compete for that.
Okay, I think we can have more than one, so you're welcome to sit in.
Great. I'd love to see the process.
Yeah.
When I was reviewing the minutes, I saw something on page two about our historic overlay district consideration, and it said, Sue, that you advised that staff goals would be to one, and then skip that, but number two is right size, the overlay district. What does that mean?
It meant making sure that we had it applying to the districts, to the areas of town that we wanted to.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I can reword that to say that.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what you want.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
If there's nothing else about the minutes, but if there is, jump in, but is there a motion to approve them?
To approve.
John approves, all second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sarah's hands up, Dan, myself, and John, aye. Okay, passes. Now for announcements. Sue, do you have any?
Do not.
Well, I'll say, I think commissioners saw this through Sue's email, but they are doing something a little differently with the supporting documents, because with the town's webpage, website rollout, it just seems better and cleaner to standardize how different boards, committees, commissions have their, their supporting docs and agendas and minutes, and there's that little like sub-window within each webpage, commission's webpage. And so in doing that, it's been a little bit tricky to have everything like as easily accessible. I found when I was clicking some of the links, it would like give me a notification, do you want to proceed, and then it would open a new tab, and then it would open Google Drive. So I don't know if you all are familiar with how the select board does their, or how the town manager's office provides supporting docs to the select board, but they do it just by providing one PDF of all the documents and the agendas on the first page, and each agenda item has clickable hyperlinks that bring you to the documents within the PDF. So Sue's kind of tried to, staff are trying to see that.
Hyperlinks is a nice touch. It just makes it a little bit easier.
Right.
The rest of it, I thought, was great, actually, because that means it's all open to the public, right?
Yeah. The other, the other one was as well, but this keeps it all in one central, as my software is bound. Yeah, my software, I need to upgrade it to be able to do the clickable links, so I'll work on that for the next meeting. Could be a little trial and error to what works best for the planning commission.
I did like with the Google Drive program that I had some accessibility to it, and I think there were some documents that were fine for, you know, me to edit, and we talked about that, and it seemed to go well for a couple of years, and I was able to just get in and make some changes. But now with it, I'll be on the town webpage, I won't be able to do that, but less voluntary work for me, so that's the bright side. So we'll see how that goes for a while, so if anyone is confused about that, public or commissioners, please let staff and myself know. Any other announcements? No? Okay, moving on to the first agenda item, we've seen this one, or talked about this a couple of times. This is the, a request for an amendment to the, a standard in the neighborhood zoning district, neighborhood center zoning district. There's a member, the proposers of Fuller Engineering, which represents Valvoline, and it's on the site of the current stop and go business, oil change business, and they provided a second memo for this meeting, or, you know, document, and staff has provided another memo as well, so in response. So maybe the staff and the requester want to, you know, sum up or present in any additional way that you'd like. I assume, you know, all the commissioners and public has, has had access to all these documents, so we don't need a word by word repeat, but anything you want to do or say, and then, you know, commissioners can ask questions, and we'll go from there a little bit, and then I'm hoping that we can just take, you know, this time, take a vote and, you know, just make, make an actual decision on this this time. So Sue, where, do you want to?
Well, I, I can start. I just want to clarify, in my memo, I talked about the, you know, how amendments can occur. One is the planning commission can, can put forth an amendment, and that's what they're asking of the planning commission to do. And then I aired in my memo, so thank you to Tom for pointing out that our charter has a different process for a petitioned zoning amendment. I had stated erroneously in this that it's 5% of the voters of town. Our charter supersedes that, and it's actually 10%, and then it goes to an Australian ballot. So it is a much higher standard if the planning commission doesn't put forth that, so I apologize for that error. And then I would just, you know, we, we kind of addressed some comments from the amendment and statement that the property owner put forth, and I just, I really feel strongly that the planning commission did not err in 2015. There was a public outreach process. In fact, we had communicated directly with the property owner, I believe he was the property owner of this at that time. We, you saw in the January meeting that there was some, you know, consideration by the planning commission. So you might not agree with the decision that they made back then, but they did have a public process, and they did, you know, consider some of those things, so what do you want to do with it? And I also, you know, it's, zoning amendments are supposed to happen at the district level. We do know that this is tied to a site-specific proposal, and so I just, you know, we, we talked a little bit in the memo about, you know, that, that when the planning commission was waiting that out in 2014 and 2015, they were thinking about other development opportunities, not the particular, particular loss due to a particular businesses need to have their garage doors facing front. It was more of the, what do we want this zoning district to be? So I will leave it at that. Unless there's questions about what we prepared.
Yeah, if there's any questions from commissioners, if not, we'll move to the property owner, their representatives to present, but I'll, I see Dan's hand up first before that.
Yeah, just real quick, so Sue, you're saying that in 2015, there was consultation with particular business operators with this condition, and including stop and go?
Not, no, I wouldn't say that there was specific, there was outreach, we had business kind of roundtable breakfast, and I believe that Mike LaCroix was the property owner at that time. He definitely gave us feedback, I can't recall if it was specific to the vehicular bays. We didn't go directly to any business that had the bays, but, you know, there was.
Oh, okay. So in answer, so I'm just, the, I'm sure the petitioners can get into this, but so in answer to the very first bullet point question in there, proposed amendment, it, the answer is no, the planning commission did not consult with individuals engaged in the regular operation of an automobile service center? Is that, I mean, generally speaking?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that. I mean, we did have, we did have interactions with Mike LaCroix, who was a property owner. Don't know if he was operating the business at the time.
Okay.
I think it's not as simplistic to say, no, we did not engage with people over this.
Okay, darn it.
If there's nothing else for Sue at this time, how about the property owners and their representatives to speak?
Sure. So, my name's Celine LaCroix, representing property owner. So thank you, Sue, I did not see the memo that you prepared in response to the first page of the document, but thank you. It sounds like the answer is essentially, you may have, you did speak with my father, it sounds like, and he would have been opposed to the change, but the change was made anyways, and then kind of the other points are more or less that nothing really is going to be considered further about it, because there was the opportunity to speak. My father had the opportunity to speak with you, or?
No, I mean, I would say, I wouldn't say that, to the first point in, in your memo that, that the planning commission erred, that they didn't do public outreach, I think that's not really a point that's debatable. They did do the outreach.
They did, yes.
It was adopted through public hearings and stuff like that. So, you know, you might not agree with their decision, and it can be reconsidered at this time.
Okay, I understand. So I think we'll, I'll move to sort of the relevance to the town plan, because I feel that that is important. While this amendment request is prompted by a site-specific change, it does impact six centers in this district, and the neighborhood center has the, next to the service center, they have an equal concentration of automobile service centers, each have six. This, as you know, the neighborhood center was part of the service center, so it split the density equally between this neighborhood center and the service center. So this impacts not just the property that I own, but there's six total, one of which is Bradable Tire, who has very prominent street-facing doors, and I don't believe could be configured in any way other than that due to embankment on the back. So, so this change does apply to a number of centers here. So we are all aware, and one of the wonderful things about Bradable is that it's a regional hub town. It attracts tourists, it attracts a lot of individuals seeking to shop and do business here because of its size and because of the nature of Vermont. Most people don't live in town, they live outside of town, they want acreage, they want privacy, and in order to facilitate that, they need to be able to commute by automobile. Bicycle and bus are not practicable for the majority of residents in this area. It is, you know, if you live in town, it may be, it may work, but also just for a little poll, how many people drove a vehicle here tonight? My show of hands. Okay, so, yeah, it seems the majority of people commute by vehicle, and it's also very important to Bradable that it's accessible by vehicle because of its draw for individuals outside of town. So the town plan discusses some commercial districts, one of which is Putney Road, and it doesn't specify necessarily that it's only the service center part of Putney Road. Putney Road continues south through the neighborhood center zone, and that the town plan would like to encourage high-quality development to meet contemporary standards in the market while preserving their role as a regional center. So to do that, you need to have transportation infrastructure that supports vehicles, and one of those things is where people get their cars serviced. So that's very important to have those available, and, so, excuse me, I just got a little lost here. So in order to support that, we have existing centers, they're concentrated in the neighborhood center, but they're all old and decaying, and what the town would like is high-quality construction that meets modern building standards. So these centers are a great place to meet that goal by allowing them to renovate and build higher-quality construction. So the change would support existing infrastructure by allowing the existing buildings to adapt to modern demands. It would support the infrastructure, the improvement of transportation infrastructure by providing convenient and well-located automobile services. It encourages high-quality development and alignment with contemporary standards by allowing automobile service centers to preserve their most valuable feature and thereby be better able to afford this high-quality construction. And it preserves Bradable's function as a regional center that's primarily accessed by vehicle by supporting the continued existence of viable service centers frequented by locals and travelers alike. So it meets the town plan in a number of ways. There are some economic goals that the town sites, they would like to meet, and one of those is to increase prosperity and have, and the opportunity to ensure healthy community that respects the physical environment. So these automobile service centers have been in place in the neighborhood center since the 50s, quite a few of them, and one of the risks inherent with automobile service centers is they pollute the environment, or they can because of oil and the release of those hazardous materials. So allowing these businesses to continue to do business on the sites where they presently exist does respect the physical environment because they stay in place, they continue to operate on that, and they don't leave and leave a cleanup issue behind where the property can own, used, or needs to be cleaned up. And it prevents them from seeking other sites if they're allowed to continue to operate where they are. We don't go and dirty another piece of property. And another economic goal was to foster the growth of industry in existing clusters, including transportation. And where I've said that there's already six centers here, this change would allow them to stay where they are, stay in place, continue to be economically viable, and keep this existing cluster in place. Another economic goal was to obtain adequate provision of infrastructure vital for economic growth, and where I've discussed that a large part of the economic growth in Bradable is supported by out-of-town users. They arrive by vehicle, they need a place to support that, they need the infrastructure to support that, and there's already these existing centers in place, and they should be allowed to renovate and rebuild and preserve their most important economic feature, which is their front-facing doors. So the zoning district sites specifically, that they would like high-quality construction. Again, I've mentioned that these, these facilities are old and decaying, and they need to be updated, and not just one, there's multiple that are noted by the town assessor as being below average for age. So if not now, they will at some point need to rebuild, and if they aren't able to keep their front-facing doors, which is a primary economic driver for them to be successful, then they won't be able to rebuild, and they're going to continue to stay in these old buildings that is the exact opposite of what this district wants and what the town plan wants. The town and the district both want high-quality construction, and the only way you can get that with commercial property is by having a business that can pay for it. And we have some expert testimony here to tell you that these doors are critical for an automobile service center, for all automobile service centers. They make a huge impact on the amount of dollars that these stores can make, and if you want high-quality construction, you have to give these businesses the opportunity to maximize the dollars that they're taking in, because that's how commercial real estate is, it functions. It's all based on how many dollars can they bring in to support the cost of construction. So in order to get this high-quality construction, the zoning needs to be permissive of the types of building features that allow the businesses to make money to support that instruction. So I will turn it over to Michael, Michael Ferry, to tell you more about the prince of the doors.
Okay, thank you. How are you guys? My name's Michael Ferry, I am a buyer in this area, I work for Valvoline and Oil Change. We're a family business, we're a franchisee, we are based out of Connecticut, and we have one other location in Vermont, and it's funny, Celine was just talking about how it's a regional hub. It's in Rutland, and our Rutland store is the largest, garage from the largest geographical radius out of any other store in the entire country, which you might not believe, but it does. And whenever I have a, you know, meeting or a franchise meeting, everyone seems to be amazed at how a scenario like that can draw from 15, 20, 30 miles away, whereas in metro New York, where we also operate, it's a completely different scenario. As for the front-facing garage doors, the industry, the quick loop industry kind of started in the mid to late 80s, and no one had really tested yet at that point what works best with that business in terms of traffic flow and in terms of just the best possible economic return. And so you, you might hear or see some other configurations where garage doors are not facing the street, but if you were to construct something like that, you're immediately starting to get a disadvantage. Now, you won't find another loop center that's not, newly constructed loop center in the last 20 years or newer that's not facing the street. Not from me, not from my competitors, no. I mean, we're having, you know, some competitors enter our other markets, and they're doing the same thing. Free bays facing the street, it provides you with the most visibility to see inside of the store, right? Just based off the running square foot front of the building. If you were to rotate that and maybe try and put some windows, there's, you know, supports blocking the windows, there'll be some sort of retainer where you can't see the cars are in there, you won't be able to see the depth of the building. But it, you know, it won't, you won't attract anything like that in terms of an area. It's, it's very, it's very challenging. And what we've actually done in our own portfolio of stores, we've taken the bottom, you know, 5%, a lot of them have issues where the bays aren't facing the street, and we'll go and we'll rip the building down and we'll construct it facing the street, and you'll see instant growth. We just did it in Long Island, we opened Thanksgiving, and the business has grown. It's been there for 30 years, that store. And it's never, it's never done numbers like it's doing right now. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are you familiar with your location in Enfield, Connecticut?
I am familiar with my location in Enfield, Connecticut.
Do you know about that one being slanted off the road and what the?
It is slanted, it is in the bottom of the percentage of stores, it is a lift store, so that actually doesn't have any drive-through capability whatsoever. And that store came in a package, so there were, it was a, you know, single operator, he had three or four stores in the area, and that store came as basically, you know, the bad duck. And we weren't willing to give up the other three loop centers in order to not operate the one. So it was, we'll, you know, we'll take it, we'll operate it, and it's made money, but it's not nearly, not even close to as successful as some of the other stores in the area. We've been in and out of the town of South Windsor a handful of times, which is right next door, and we'd previously lost a lease, but we constructed a new one a year and a half ago, and that's, you know, it's phenomenal. I have a picture of it, if you'd like to see what this building would look like. It's essentially the same thing.
I have another question, do you, is there any sort of industry-wide, like, document or guideline that states what you're saying?
In terms of what?
The front-facing doors being absolutely crucial? You know, not that I'm necessarily downing or thinking that.
Is there, is there a one? I mean, I think probably the best way to tell you that is by action. I could absolutely get you in writing from Valvoline and Oil Change to Alex and Ken that.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they won't accept new franchisees, because they're getting more stingy about their brand, that you have to upheld, this sort of a me thing, but they won't approve stores without the footprint being approved. So for this, probably wouldn't get it approved anyway.
I, I just want to take a moment to remind the planning commission that, you know, we're, we're hearing from a franchisee and what's best for his business, the planning commission's role is to be thinking about it in terms of the zoning district. Otherwise, we're getting, you know, you can get close to some, some change that, that, you know, is, is catering to the needs of somebody else. So the planning commission's role is kind of the policy, what do we want for that district? What is the town plan say? And, you know, you can go through the town plan, and you can find different parts of economic development and transportation, but what does the land use chapter say? And, you know, as I outlined in the January memo, we're looking to transition it. It's not an easy job to transition something from very auto-dominated. I think the 60s, 70s sprawl, we see it on Canal Street as well. It's hard, it takes time, we don't have a lot of heat in this market here, but the town plan laid out a different vision.
I just want to give anyone else the opportunity to present, and then definitely hear, maybe from Dan first, because he wasn't here at last meeting. We'll have questions and comments, and call you guys back up, maybe if you want to respond.
Just, I want to do one thing to kind of put maybe a pin in it a little bit, but, so your, the land use code does allow service stations as a conditioned use in this zone, so the town code recognized this as a conditional use in this zone, which I assume means you want to encourage this use, and it's allowed use in this zone with special conditions.
And extra review.
Exactly, exactly. But the code contradictorily places a restriction on that use, so much so that it can't be even a conditional use, because no one's going to pursue it when you have such a restriction by rotating the garage doors away from the street. So I guess there's that, the, the two approaches don't seem to make sense to me intuitively, where one portion of code says this is a conditioned use, it requires extra review, but at the same time, we're putting in this restriction that would actually prevent it from ever occurring, so, just a thought.
I'll offer just a little perspective on that. I think the, the use category is automobile service centers, right? It's not quick oil change.
Yes.
So, so for the more broader group, there's things like Kresgeys and Allen Scott, right? And they face the side, and I don't know how their business is doing financially, but that's not as important for them to have allegedly as, you know, to have, have open bays facing the front. But we have had some other situations where we've talked about when we were revising the land use regs, you know, a year or two ago, and it looked like maybe we were removing a use from the one and only, like, remaining district that it was in, and we felt like it should have a place at least in town somewhere, so then we made sure that we retained it somewhere, like in the industrial or the service center, whatever that was. It was like heavy construction or something like that. So I think, I think, you know, to at least still provide the use being possible, you know, in at least one or two other districts is at least not saying that it can't be done in town. As far as, do, you know, does the town want it more than it concurrently exists and everything? That's another matter, but, Dan, we'd like to hear from you, since you weren't here at the last meeting, and that's not to say that the commissioners who were here at the last meeting and gave their straw poll vote, you know, have all the same feelings then now as they do then, but like to hear from you and thoughts, questions, perspective.
Yeah, I have, well, a topic that I haven't heard today, I don't know if it came up at the January meeting, and I believe I brought this up at the December meeting, but I don't recall it, so I must admit, I'm, I'm also on the DRB, so I have a little bit overlap of memories of this project. But, so the topic is the question of the fact that this particular service center has a drive-through where the cars, except for that one bay, most of the cars exit toward the road? And I guess, just to, you know, just to.
That's not the issue.
No, no, I understand, but I, I just have a question about the, since we're talking about the comparison of, of different types of, of facilities like this, I'm just curious from either the owner or the, the franchisee, if that type of arrangement is considered a higher value or a higher quality construction of this type of facility, the, the drive-through toward the street?
Versus?
Do you mean, is that?
Versus, versus where you would pull in nose-first and pull back out in reverse?
Yeah.
Is this, so in other words, would this be considered a really high-quality facility versus one where you pull straight in?
Well, because it can do a higher volume if you do.
Can you zoom up to the mic?
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry.
Thanks, I know it's bad.
Yes, the, the drive-through format can do a higher volume, as evidenced by, you know, the existing building there, and, you know, are attestation that these front-facing doors are more valuable because of that, because you can see into these buildings, because they can handle a higher volume, and they do currently. This is existing already, this is nothing new, it's been there since 1950. And, you know, the development is based on, does it make sense commercially? And of course, a drive-through makes more. And of course, a drive-through makes more sense than a pull-in-pull-out because it takes less time.
Anything else, Dan?
I am curious what, what the sticking issues were that came up at the January meeting. I, I'm, I'm not getting from the notes, the sense that there was, you know, there, there might, it says one commissioner had this opinion and so forth. I, I don't need a review of the whole thing. But would anyone who did express their opinions at that meeting care to reiterate or summarize them?
So my point at the January meeting was that, and if I get some of the dates wrong, Sue, correct me. When the strategic plan set this zone up as a neighborhood center, it wasn't anything like a neighborhood center zone. And in the interim period, apparently, the city and the state have taken no action to make that transition from whatever kind of zone it was to what a neighborhood, what the desired kind of neighborhood centered zone would be. In fact, I drove it before the last meeting and it looks to me just like, you know, a service. I'm assuming what a service zone would be. And so after, what would that be, eleven years? And, you know, with no concrete plans on the horizon to make that transition, I think we ought to admit that until something happens to kick off that transition, we're going to assist the existing businesses in the zone to be the best that they can be. And I have no problem personally with the fact that this is an amendment requested by a single business because I see this only as the leader of multiple businesses who will come in and say, gee, we want to redo our building too and upgrade it, make it new and fill all, you know, all the other requirements which we can negotiate as a plating commission. So I have no problem with the fact that it's a single business request because I think it's actually going to be a model for other businesses that exist in the zone who want to come in. That was my position. I, I voted yes on the amendment in the January, in the straw poll.
Straw poll.
Straw poll, straw man, whatever. Straw person.
Straw. Sarah, do you want to add, add some of your thoughts for Dan, for everyone?
Yeah, I mean, it probably won't be very helpful, but I was on the fence. So I can see both sides of the argument and, yeah, so that's not very helpful. That's, that was my position at the last meeting was, I felt like I could go either way, but was leaning towards no, I think, is what I had said.
And I kind of forgot what I said, but I, I, my straw vote was no. But I think I said, and I still more or less agree that, you know, that none of us were planning commissioners back when this was done. So, you know, we are relying on staff's report. And I think, you know, it is, it is what happened, that this was a deliberate decision. And, you know, we're going to be, and it's based off the town plan. There's some quotes in the document from the town plan. But if one looks at the actual more specific description of the neighborhood center, you know, land use on page one forty, it seems like that is, you know, even less ambiguously advocating for the sort of standards and provisions that shifted from auto-centric to more pedestrian.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to criticize because I certainly wasn't here either. And I'm sure the process was done properly and appropriately.
Absolutely.
Not under question at all, by me certainly. But these were not written in stone.
No, language can be changed.
They're meant to be reviewed and, you know, circumstances change. And we all know that, you know, Bradford didn't grow in the way, I assume, that people thought it was going to grow at the time. And so, you know, again, to me, the right answer is not necessarily this amendment. It's let's review it and see if it still should be a neighborhood center. And by God, if we're going to call it a neighborhood center, let's do something to make it a neighborhood center. And just saying, well, you guys are really out of luck.
Well, the thing I was getting to was that starting probably towards the end of this year, we're going to be up for our, you know, every eight-year reconsideration of the town plan.
Yeah, agreed.
And I feel like that is the time to look at some of these foundational factors and talk to the public and say, hey, look, maybe what you've been saying, that we wanted to shift these districts to less auto-centric. And then, and then you and maybe, you know, we'll all agree or.
Or dedicate the money to help them shift, right?
Right.
Because it's just not going to happen.
We'll check in with the state and how they're, you know, coming along with their projects, suppose it, so, yeah.
I, I just wanted to say, I mean, as the one person who was there by twenty twelve when we were writing the town plan, it is State Road. There is the Putney Road project that they had been talking about. And we were of the opinion that a lot of landowners were holding on to any improvements for the Putney Road plan to come along. It keeps getting pushed back. But, you know, there is a conceptual plan in place that we thought was going to transform the area and spur redevelopment. And therefore, we could move it to a different type of development pattern in that.
Agreed. And I think it's important to say, listen, I, I'm personally, I want to be really, really clear. I am not criticizing the decision with time. I'm sure it was made with good intentions and best date at the time. It's been eleven years and, you know, things change. And again, time to review it, right? Now, the question is though, what do you do with these people? And, and somebody else that comes in the interim? Because it's not a slow, it's not a quick process to redo the zoning strategic plan.
Dan, after hearing that, do you want to maybe offer the way you're leaning? And I don't know, I guess we'll give people of the public, you know, the requesters, another chance to respond. And then we'll take the vote. I think it's helpful, you know, for, for people to see like the way people are leaning, you know?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm definitely leaning towards accepting their proposal or however you want to look at it. The, the amendment. Now, I, I don't know the nuts and bolts of how that should be done. And I, I guess we'll leave that up to if we were to decide that this, that we would accept this, how, how it could be enforced or how it could be carried out. But, but yeah, I, I don't think we need to be hindered by, I mean, I think that's the whole point of sort of an iterative process of having these, the commission continue on. That previous commission knew that these things might change, just like anything we do. Could change or be changed.
Just, I can speak to the process of what would happen next because it, it could help you all make a decision. So basically, the planning commission would then, if you were to accept this proposal and want to move it forward, you know, you could work on language, tweak it. It doesn't have to be exactly the way that they proposed it. And then you'd have, there's a report that has to be written about how it meets the town plan and whatnot. And then there would be a planning commission public hearing that we would advertise and people could come and speak to it. And then at that point, there's a decision for the planning commission. Do you want to move forward and send it on to the select board where they would have to have two planning commissions? Or do you want to drop it and not move it forward? So at this point, it would just be, your vote is kind of like, yeah, we'll take this up as an amendment and start the process. But it doesn't commit you.
So, so to get these folks an answer, when, when would they be able to have a definite answer at that? I mean, what sort of timeframe are we talking about?
I suppose with our vote, if, if, if all four of us vote in favor and it moves forward, then we could also, or as part of the vote or a secondary vote, we could, you know, direct staff to lead us through the process as soon as possible or, or relaxed process, right? Because, because there's no step saying like you have to take each additional step at the very next meeting or, or have sooner meetings than monthly. So we have to, we'd have to decide that too, our primary.
I mean, at this point, I mean, you'd be looking at a, you know, say, say, planning commission would use language at the March meeting and then voted to hold a public hearing. That maybe would be your April meeting or it could be a little bit before you could have a separate public hearing. Then you pass it on to the select board. They have to have two public meetings with fifteen. You're definitely looking at at least four months before they'd have an answer.
But that would be the fastest process possible. In other words, there's no other process that they could follow that would be any faster. Okay.
And just so I'm clear to you, if the select board takes whatever the planning commission forwards on and they, maybe they want to massage it to, and before they even say, all right, let's have a public hearing. Or they could say to, well, we don't even want to take up a public hearing. Is that possible? Or they have to do something?
Yeah, they, I think if it's sent to them, they have to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They could, they could have the public hearing, make some changes, adopt it. They could have the public hearing, send it back to the planning commission for changes, but. I think the, the fastest we're looking at is four months.
Okay. Dan, were you, were you finished for now?
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the response or the question from the proponent of the change.
How about Steve?
Just a few things that I don't think necessarily came up this time, but I, I think were discussed in the previous meetings. This might help as well, Dan, is that it's worth remembering that there are three separate pieces of the neighborhood center. So, so this particular proposal will also impact the other two that are on Canal Street and on Marlboro Road. Generally similar, you know, form characteristics, but these are three areas that are all going to be impacted by the same dimensional standards that this were to be taken up. And so, you know, it's also worth considering that I, I do believe that we have this used provided for conditionally in at least the service center, if not perhaps also industrial, yeah. Where there is not that dimensional standard regarding the, the way the door space. So, so there is an existing pathway where there is perhaps land in this town that can be purchased and developed in accordance to that. The, the dimensional standard in question as well also applies to all the other uses that are provided for in this district. So the decision that's made while thinking, excuse me, while thinking about how well it works with regards to this one use will impact, I believe it's well over fifty other uses that are provided for in this district. So I think that's worth taking quite seriously as well.
Sorry, could you say it again?
The, the potential change to this one-dimensional standard, the dimensional standards for the neighborhood center apply to any development in the neighborhood center as part of the site plan review.
With vehicular service bay doors, or something?
Right.
Yes, it might be instead of six that are in this particular neighborhood center, it might be as many as fifty across all three neighborhood centers.
So there are, I believe, well over fifty uses in the table for this particular district. There are quite a lot of other ways that land can be developed, that is to say, in this particular district. And this is a conditional use, so it's not presumed to be inherently acceptable or unacceptable. It has to be taken individually. And that, that's why it goes to the development review board for a public hearing.
Steve, so you're saying that more than just automobile service centers have vehicular service bay doors?
Specifically, what I'm saying is that there's well over fifty land uses that are provided for either as permitted or conditional uses in the neighborhood center. Any development in the neighborhood center that has to have a site plan review has the same standards applied to it.
Right.
So any of those kinds of developments may well work just fine with this particular requirement. And if, if a decision is made thinking about just one of the land uses, it could have unintended consequences for the way that this was comprehensively thought about in the previous planning process. So that, that's worth keeping in mind.
I apologize, I'm still a little bit confused on that. But my, my thought would be that this amendment would be a, a bridge, if you will, until a review of perhaps the neighborhood center itself and the appropriateness to the area. And then it would either, you know, the, the zone regulation itself would be changed or the amendments would be, go away or whatever, right?
Well, I don't think we put, you know, like expiry dates on our amendments or anything, right? It's just we make amendment and then it can be changed at any point in the future with a proper process.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I just doesn't seem, I, I'm sorry, I wish I had a more professional database solution. It just doesn't seem right to take an, an area that has a particular feel to it and just say, well, okay, we wanted you to be cute little coffee shops and, you know, what I'm saying? And yeah, the grandfathered any existing businesses, but they can't do any upgrades because they're caught up in, you know, they're caught up in this and they change. I, I don't know. I'm, that's my opinion. I'm not saying it's the right one. I'm just saying that's my opinion. It, it does not look like a neighborhood center, to me.
President, I agree.
Yes, Steve Wilson, Boulder Gate. I just want to point out the request, the, the zoning amendment request basically is giving grandfathering provisions to basically, you have to have existing overhead door space in the street. This is not to say, as we, as we suggested, the proposed amendment standard, vehicle service bay doors must be on the side or rear of a building except locations where front-facing doors presently exist. So if you really put a pin in it, there but six, there's but six existing buildings in this zone that this change would apply to. New service vehicle bays that came in, new service centers that came in would have to adhere to the, they would be able to face the street. This is what our suggestion was, just trying to give a grandfathering provision to those existing businesses that face the street.
Is that, for the question for staff, is that all right and legal or whatever to have that sort of provision?
Yeah, I'd want to talk with our town attorney about that, so, but, you know, we could do that over the next month if you move this forward. You know, we could tweak that language and come back because at, at that point, they'll turn it over to you. We could work on the language if we were, got advice that.
That'd be then, in other words, what you're saying is that the amendment would only be valid for grandfather businesses is?
I like to use the word non-conforming.
Non-conforming, sorry, non-conforming businesses, okay.
Non-conforming structures.
I'm not sure that we would know without consulting the town attorney as well if this non-conforming definitions, which is intended to take the existing doors as, as being what makes it non-conforming, that they can then be fully redeveloped. It might need to retain the existing doors where they are for that to continue to be true as far as the non-conforming structure, which I don't think would be useful for the site that they're intending. So, which also isn't supposed to be the point of the comprehensive discussion. But it, it might need to be that that one wall remains, as, as I think was brought up a few months ago, for that definition to remain.
I think if you, I think, you know, whatever action you take tonight, if you want to move it forward, you can find a way.
Yeah, I think rather than speculating, it'd probably be wise to talk to the town attorney. Depending, of course, on what people think.
Are we ready for a vote, commissioners? Sarah, Dan? I don't have the wording of the, of the proposal right in front of me, actually, so. Is anyone else?
I, what I would suggest, unless, you know, they, they might want to chime in is that you, you could move, because you want an affirmative, you could move to, you know, take up this amendment as something the planning commission will work on and propose or something. A bit wordy, but we haven't really focused on the language that they proposed. I think it's very clear what they're asking for. So I don't know that you have to stick with their language, but basically you're. So I don't know that you have to stick with their language, but basically you're going to take it up and, and move it towards a public hearing process.
Those sort of going yes and moving to the next step of detailing and review? Okay. I can certainly go for that.
The other commissioners understand that? Dan and Sarah?
So you're saying a yes vote would mean we would consider the amendment potentially rewording it a little bit, wordsmithing it?
Yep.
That's the answer to the question.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Should I do roll call or?
Did you move it, Tom?
I did, yeah. Should I do roll call or should people volunteer to, to vote? Well, Sarah, you were on the fence earlier.
Yeah.
So how about, how about you, you pull the Band-Aid and make the decision?
Thanks for putting me on the spot. I'm going to vote no.
So because we need four, anyway, I won't say that, but did you guys know that from last time?
Yes, I remember that.
John?
Still vote yes.
Dan?
I, I'm voting yes, I.
And I'm voting no.
And can I ask a question? I'm sorry if this is out of order, but is there, uh, uh, because I, well, anyway, you know what, forget it, I'm sorry.
What?
I was just going to say there's like no appeal of this, they could do the petition amendment, they could come back in March if there was six members here if they wanted to.
Right. But we'd have to warn it on the agenda.
Comprehensive planning process.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get at, because we were missing members that I'm not sure.
Well, with the straw poll, which wasn't official last time, Lindsay said no, correct?
She said she was on the.
Oh, she was on the fence, oh, sorry.
She was kind of inclined to put it to a public hearing, or she was open to.
Sorry, I misremembered that, but. Yeah, Todd just hasn't been here, so.
No matter how many members are here, we just need four votes essentially.
Yeah, it needs to be, much already of the, of the positions, which is seven, four, seven. Okay, well, you know, we're going to make a note to talk about this neighborhood center, I think, when we talk about the town plan, at least.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you for, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next is another revisit of a topic we've talked about a few times. But that's all right, you know, this isn't, you know, I don't feel the planning commission like the, you know, maybe some more like judicial bodies where they, you know, they're seeing applications and, you know, they're swamped with, with tasks and they have a very streamlined process for just making decisions and moving on to the next, you know, I think we're, we're an advisory body and, you know, we can really talk about things and, and consider them for a while. So anyway, this is the, the proposal to add more or revise our bicycle parking standards, and we have Jonathan Weber of Local Motion here. I remember at the last meeting, or no, two meetings ago, you know, there wasn't a resounding, you know, there wasn't a majority yes to move additional bike parking or bike parking minimums forward. But what I heard was, and maybe it was a nice way of saying no, I don't know, but I heard people wanting more information in order to possibly move forward with this, so because bicycling and pedestrian advancement and aiding that has been, I don't know, you know, a big focus, I think, in the community and with our planning efforts and stuff over the last few years since I've been, you know, paying attention. You know, I definitely wanted to give another chance because Jonathan Weber volunteered to find some more information or background data that could be found and provide some rationale. And, you know, staff did a little bit more, although looking back at the November memo, you know, they, they provided some then too. So I wanted to give one more chance to kind of step back a little bit and, and try to see if some, you know, rationale and, you know, description of, of the issue and how this might tangibly solve it could be, could be presented. So we have a memo from staff and we have the, a memo from Jonathan Weber and maybe he will also be presenting a little presentation, so I think we should start with that. And, yeah, so Jonathan, over to you.
Jonathan? Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to get into the.
Sue, did you have something to say real quick?
I was just going to ask Jonathan if you wanted to, if you wanted me to screen share, give you, to put up your presentation.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, but I was, I was going to say, you know, I'm happy to get into the slides that I have. Basically, my slides give a case study on one specific development, just sort of as an aid to, to help us think through together what this would look like in implementation. So I don't know if it makes sense to go straight to that, or if maybe it would be helpful for me to answer any questions that commissioners may have based on, on the memo that I provided or, or any other questions that you have.
Okay, sure, let's do questions or comments.
So I was one of the people that had questions and wanted more information. And I do want to say real clearly, I'm, like I said, I'm not personally a bike commuter, but I legitimately had an open mind, but without the information I needed to make a decision. So what I would be most interested in is not a view of what this, one of these implementations would look like. I'm more interested in what data shows that, that this is going to be an economic benefit, if you will, in some broad sense to a community like Brattleboro. Does the distinction make sense?
Jonathan, you can answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, actually, I'm specifically asking Jonathan. Because my understanding is we're not just saying, hey, listen, we're a bike community and, and I'm not trying to be funny here, but whatever it takes, whatever it costs to be a bike friendly community, we're going to pay. I'm assuming we're saying, listen, you know, this is a good economic decision to make, right? So I'm looking for the information, the hard data, if you will, that says, okay, this makes sense economically to do. We have so many bike riders and, and they need so many spaces and it's very similar to, you wrote that memo, right, Steve? Very similar to the 5%, you know, number, and here's some example cities and blah, 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 blah. That kind of stuff, Jonathan. Do you, do you have that kind of stuff?
I'm a little, I'm a little unclear, because, you know, to the angle that I come at it from is that bicycle parking is a need in order to have bicycle transportation, in the same way that car parking is a need in order to have car transportation.
Yeah, and Jonathan, I'm going to say this and then I'm going to, I'm going to sit back because I, I don't want to necessarily dominate this. I fully understand, you're already bought in on this, right? And I'm not, so, so you, you need for me personally to sell me that it's a good idea, not show me what the thing is going to look like. Right? Because you're, you're the ED of a bicycle activist group for God's sakes. So I'm, I'm sure you believe strongly that this is needed and important to do, I'm, I'm just asking, where's the data that shows me?
Yeah, and I'm, I can certainly try and pull some more data, it would be helpful for me if you have any more specifics in terms of like, what, are you talking economic benefit to individuals, are you talking economic benefit to developers in terms of the, the value of the units that they're selling? Are you talking economic development or economic value in terms of people being able to access employment because they're able to have a bicycle? Like, is there, is there any more specificity you can provide in terms of what you're looking for?
I'm going to sit back because I don't think we're talking the same thing. I, I'm actually just trying to echo what you, I thought had insisted was a good ROI for the project. And I just wanted to see the data that you based that ROI on.
That if more racks are built, they will be, bikes.
Yeah, we have a shortage of biking, of biking parking places downtown and, you know, so many bikes are getting stolen because there is inadequate security for them and I, I, yet again, I'm not, you know, I'm not like Jonathan in terms of my knowledge.
So that sort of data.
That, that sort of data. Now, I know that I read Steve's memo and I thought he had, at least some data said, well, you have to generally consider what 5% is like a cutoff point for bike friendly community, if I remember the terminology right.
So, and I, I don't want to, you know, jump ahead in the queue here, but the, the 5% that I was using was just coming from a conversation that, that staff and Tom had with Jonathan where I believe that was what was mentioned as, as being sort of a target for what would be evidence of, of success.
But didn't you say that Brattleboro had, what was it, a half of 1%?
One and a half percent of the mode share, which is relatively high for, for a town in New England. But certainly not 5%. There, in, in, in my memo, which I'm sure we can take questions on after Jonathan. There were only seven New England towns out of a thousand and something that, that were at that 5% at the last American Community Survey. It could actually be more, there's a large range of error, but that's.
Hey, listen, if the planning commission is, is, you know, hey, let's do this, right? And let's just try and do it as most cost efficient way possible, I'll just sit back and, and, you know, be a team player. I'm not trying to, to throw a wrench in it, but.
I get that.
From, from my background, somebody would ask these kinds of questions, says, okay, where's the data that justifies that we need to spend, we need to put these strict rules in for minimum bike parking?
Yeah, I know Jonathan's answering questions, now I would also quickly say that, from what I've heard from them, you know, that him and Steve's memo and stuff is that there's, there's a dearth of data. There's very little.
Then we admit there's data, we go ahead and do what we think's right and collect it.
So, but Jonathan, I don't know if you want to answer, but then Dan will, looks like he has a question. But Jonathan, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a lot of data in terms of like bike theft. I, you know, I could reach out to the Brattleboro Police Department and, and see if they're able to provide any information on that. A lot of bike thefts, I think, do go unreported and, and unenforced. So I, I'm certainly happy to, to gather some more economic data and try and provide those, those data points. You know, it's probably not going to be like Brattleboro specific data, because there's just not a lot of it. You know, I did cite the, the study from the, the Regional Planning Commission that looked at where bikes are parked in the downtown and found that I think 60% of them were not parked at racks. So that shows at least a pretty clear lack of available and convenient bike parking in the downtown.
Yeah, I, I actually thought, again, I'm jumping ahead, but I actually thought Steve's recommendation was a pretty sensible one, right? Which focused mostly on putting more bike parking downtown, if I understand right.
Right.
Eliminating the bike minimums.
A different way to get to the same goal that I think is shared by perhaps everyone involved in the conversation today. Or certainly doesn't seem to be opposed by anyone, would be that the town does a planning study to understand where would be the best places for the town to invest in installing racks. That could be done, for instance, in the on-street parking or perhaps the off-street parking lots in downtown or other places in town, that's somewhere that we would have site control, so to speak, because that's, that's ours, it's the public realm. So, you know, we could take a few car spaces, turn them into quite a few more bike spaces than, than they would have been as car spaces and probably meet that same demand, but without doing this land use change that I think has some unwanted impacts in terms of what happens when it iterates, which is certainly the problem with car parking minimums. It's obviously a different level of, of impact, but it still is not, I think, a policy we can recommend. We could also be doing this with the cooperation of private businesses, if we're willing to, and the public supports, give them a bike rack to install in places that are lacking bike parking. We could certainly get these things installed faster than they would actually redevelop and be required to install bike parking. As, as we just saw, it takes decades if not to actually see things churn in some parts of town.
Steve, could you clarify your comments on the developer feedback towards bike minimum, towards bicycle minimums? Did I understand that right, that, that that was considered one of the biggest, largest obstacles to development?
In, in Portland, yeah.
See, that was concerning to me, because we're trying to develop, you know, we're trying to get developers in here for housing and in Portland, which is, my God, as bike friendly as you're going to get in this world. You know, developers were like, this is one of the biggest obstacles.
I think you just summed it up.
Yeah, I mean, the, the short of it is that Portland eliminated car parking minimums in a, in a small part of town, saw the mode share of biking rise above 5% in that area of their town. Between American Community surveys, it grew from about 1% to about 5% by getting rid of car parking minimums, not by adopting anything bike specific. They then got rid of car parking minimums citywide, I believe in 2020, then they added bike parking minimums in around the same time. When they were surveying developers in the city as to which regulations of all of their regulations were the most stringent and the most acted the most as a barrier to housing, it was cited as the number one among at least five others that were close, but it was the number one most cited. It, it's worth understanding that that's without any car parking minimums, so, you know, it's, it's not exactly apples to apples, but it was concerning to a lot of developers.
Want to hear from Jonathan and then get Dan and Sarah to, in here too?
Yeah, so Portland's regulation has some really aggressive stuff in it that I would not recommend being implemented here, so to say that all bike parking regulations become, you know, this like incredible barrier to development, I think is really inaccurate. Just as an example, they have a provision that prohibits you from installing the required bike parking for a unit more than 15 feet away from the unit entrance, which is obviously going to create some really big problems, so. What, you know, I provide as a model regulation is nowhere near that aggressive, it's, you know, specifically intended to be very scalable, so, you know, you all are able to adjust the ratios to require less bike parking. It is, it is definitely not as aggressive and going to be as much of a problem as Portland's was. I would not propose anything like that because we need housing. And actually, if you look at the article that, that Steve links to, it does suggest some changes to be made to that regulation, but it's not recommending that they totally repeal their bike parking regulations.
Right, I didn't make that claim.
Okay, thank you, it's a good point.
Dan or Sarah, do you have any questions for Jonathan right now or sharing, share your perspective or?
I, I guess I, I'm glad you brought up the, the barrier to housing development issue, that's what I was going to mention earlier. And I, I think Jonathan replied to that, but I just want to point out, it's basically a, a real big difference, and I know this is really obvious, but what you're doing is you're providing bicycle security more so than you're providing parking, like parking for a car, the owner provides security, you know, by locking the car. However, it can be towed away, right? With a bicycle, you know, I, I just want to, I guess I'm, I'm even hesitant to call it bicycle parking, to tell you the truth, because it's a, it's a completely different thing, although, and I think Steve's memo points out, the space, spatial requirements are, are concerning. So in any case, I, I just wanted to get, if Jonathan has, is there sort of a, you know, a way of comparing? Because I think we're implicitly doing that bicycle parking and car parking, what would be your pitch to, to, to make this more palatable, I guess?
Yeah, well, maybe that's an opportune time for me to get into the slides, because I think that sort of, they sort of get at that a bit.
Okay.
So this is looking at a development that's under review right now. So this is looking at a development that's under review right now, Seventeenth Flat Streets. This is within the urban center. What's proposed is mixed office and residential. So it's a four-level development. It is installing bike parking on the ground floor. See that here on this slide, there are bicycle storage rooms. So they are providing parking for ten bikes on wall-mounted racks in the space of eighty-five square feet. So very small amount of space to store ten bikes. This is alongside a tenant's storage room. So, you know, and this, as you can see, this is space that, you know, there's not a window there. It's, it's not a space that they found a better use for, and I think there are a lot of cases like this in other developments. So wall-mounted racks are what is being used here, and I think this would be a good way for Brattleboro to minimize the space impacts of long-term bike parking. The only real downside to these is, you know, they're a little bit harder for the person biking to use. You have to lift your bike up vertical and then get it up onto the wall. But, you know, for most people who ride bikes, this is doable. A wall-mounted rack, you know, the racks themselves cost around a hundred bucks. You know, if a hallway is sufficient width, they can often be located in a hallway. So it's a good way to sort of balance your concerns around space consumption, but also maybe wanting to provide some amount of bike parking. As I said, these are very space efficient. You can, if you have a larger room, you can fit like up to sixty bikes in a twenty-by-twenty area if you only have, you know, basically two walkways through that.
Hey Jonathan, they actually had this very thing in the apartments I was in in Providence. So what happened to, I thought the proposal being made was showers, was changing room. This to me, this to me is nothing. It's just what you would put, right, to have bikes where people can lock them?
I think I can clarify. In his first, the first time we took up this topic in like November, he was saying, you know, there's short-term bike parking, there's long-term bike parking.
This would be the longer, right?
Indoors or in a covered area. And if enough bike, long-term bike parking is required due to the ratio based on use and the size of the use, then certain amenities would be required, showers, lockers, whatever.
Obviously not in this case. Sorry, in this case, because there's no rig in place, obviously they didn't have to put it in, but they feel the developmental need to put it in. Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do just want to mention, you know, all of this is scalable and adjustable, right? So I think given the concerns that you all have expressed, you know, it probably makes sense to not include those, you know, showers and changing amenities. And that's totally fine. Including, you know, some level of requirement for long-term bike parking, like what's shown here, and for short-term bike parking outside of the building is a great step forward. And, you know, not including showers and changing rooms would not be a reason to not move forward with anything else.
I mean, this is, I have to apologize, Jonathan. Thank you for showing me this. For me personally, a multifamily should have this just as a matter of practice, right?
I mean, I agree ideally, but the only hang-up I'm having is that, you know, we're not a booming economy and it seems like it's so hard for so much to pencil out. So I'm not saying I'm a no, I'm not saying I'm a yes, but I'm saying if we were, you know, Burlington or Venuski or South Burlington, I'd be an absolute yes. But since we're not, I have hesitations. I'm not saying no, I'm not saying yes, but I'm somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
So, but Jonathan, please continue.
That's very helpful. That's at least was very helpful. Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. So this is just, this is an example of what those wall-mounted racks could look like. It would be very easy to, right now, the ordinance that the regulation that I provided doesn't specifically call out wall-mounted racks as allowable. So this is a change that I would help you make, you know, come up with a graphic to accompany it, just like we have for the allowable short-term racks. So just looking at, you know, if you were to implement what our model regulation incorporates for long-term bike parking, right? It's based on a ratio. So you take the use and the scale of the use. In this case, it's, this is both residential and some office space. So if you were to use the ratio in our model regulation, you wind up requiring sixteen long-term spaces for the residential and one long-term space for the office use. So again, and these are spaces as opposed to racks. Because if we're looking at wall-mounted spaces, each rack is one space. So the total conduct seventeen, again, they're currently providing ten, as we showed here, with that eighty-five square foot bike room. Generally speaking, wall-mounted racks can be, they can be staggered in height in order to get them a little tighter together at about sixteen inches on center. So I think they are probably not staggering the height in that bike room, and if they did, they could probably get twelve or fourteen spaces in there. Just to give you a sense of, you know, how compact this space can typically be and still really work well for bike storage.
Jonathan, just to level me, so are you saying that what this development that you're citing as a use case has done would be acceptable to you for long-term parking?
What I'm, well, in terms of, in terms of the style of the rack that they're using, yes, I think, I think that is, it would be a great step forward for Brattleboro to allow for use of that rack and require some amount of long-term bike parking.
Yeah, I guess my specific question is, if there was nothing more to the bike, to the regulations for long-term bike parking than the fact that you have to have a certain number of elevated racks, let's say against the wall, per person, but no changing facility, no, excuse me, showers, that would be okay with you? Or are you saying this is just the first step, but you still believe the regulations that include those are necessary? I'm a little confused because what you're showing me is different than what the long-term regulations are, as I understand it, proposed long-term regulations.
Yeah, so those proposed long-term regulations are intended just as a model. It's a first draft for you all to consider. And it is, yeah, you do not need to have showers and changing facilities necessarily. I think it's a great thing to have, I think, in a community that really wants to sort of spoil the cyclist and get more people out riding more. They're a great thing to include, but they are not a need to have in my mind. Having the bike storage is the key thing.
I was confused. I apologize.
So that answers the question?
Yes, thank you. I was just saying off the line, I was completely confused by that. I'm fully supporting requiring service for bikes in multifamily.
Well, I apologize if that was confusing. Yeah. Sue, were you, did you have something to say?
Yeah, okay, so just two, two kind of concerns I would bring up from staff. Number one, you know, they could construct this, and if there's a certificate of occupancy needed, then, you know, we'll make sure it's done. But what happens to the bike parking area afterwards is out of our hands. We don't do internal inspections. And if, you know, what the fire department does for inspections wouldn't cover this. So, yeah, I mean, can't guarantee long-term that this would remain there. And then the other concern that we would need to see addressed is electric bikes because there are some concerns about fires and that respect kind of thing. So.
That's a good point.
Jonathan, I'm curious if you'd be engaged with that, with any of the communities or with those issues.
Yeah.
What is best practice for math stories of electric bikes?
There are some best practices around that. Everything that I have, that I've seen, that I know of with e-bike battery fires is that they are, they are being seen in places like New York City where there is a really strong culture and market of bike couriers who use batteries at really high rates, need multiple batteries per day, are sometimes getting their batteries refurbished, sort of by off-market vendors that are tampering with the cells. And then they're often charging multiple batteries on single extension cords. So my sense, and I do not have data on this, I've asked for it, but unfortunately I don't think it exists. My sense is that this is not Jane Doe who uses her electric bike to get to work and charges her battery properly with the cord that's provided and all that stuff. It's not that person's bike whose batteries catching on fire.
That is fine, that's the fire department, but.
It's interesting.
But it, yeah, I can see these, you know, the high charging and kind of courier connection, but.
Yeah, I have not seen any coverage of any e-bike battery fires really outside of New York City. That is where that seems to be happening. It's associated with that kind of use.
Jonathan, you can continue, or maybe Dan with his hand up has a question for you?
Would that be, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Well, I just want to, there are a lot of dimensions to this. I just want to try to have us focus on the, you know, I think what the major matter at hand is the parking minimum regulation, right? The requirement for bicycle parking minimums. I want to see, you know, as was brought up before, it seems like there has been a documented impact. I know it was in Portland, but, or Seattle, but I think that's what we're, what we need to focus on, right? I'm just going to, I'm just going to ask that we try to focus on that, that's all. If that, if there are other tangential things that are, you know, important, then that's great, but.
So Dan, you think on your mind then that the thing we should be, the most important thing to get out of this bike regulation is some minimum parking standards, not the ancillary things like?
Whether to or not, or to adopt any, and I think as, I think we're going to get to Steve, or Steve can explain more about from his memo, but I think that there is, there are other ways of doing all the, the, you know, promotion of encouraging bike parking, but I think what we really, as the planning commission, we just need to be thinking about, are we going to require or have a set standard for minimums, you know, minimum parking for bikes? I, I'm intrigued by all this stuff too, but, you know, honestly, we don't have all night, so.
Do respect. I mean, the e-bike thing, I think, does, you know.
Sure, that's important. I'm glad you brought that up.
Biking, then we need to.
It's all connected. I know. I just, I mean, I think, yeah, if we could just, but, but if it's important to that, to the minimum requirement, I would like to see, you know, okay, a distribution of how many and where these minimum bike parking should be. And I think what I've already, what I've seen or heard, correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, is that the basic idea is that the current bike racks that are available are not ideal, not enough. And so that's why we're trying to promote more and have a minimum requirement in town. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. They're, the current regulation.
Yeah, so if we could focus on like, okay, currently we have this number and we want this number and, you know, and yeah, I guess I just want to cut to the chase here, sorry.
Yeah, no, I think that is the key question is whether or not you want to require long-term and/or short-term bike parking as far as developments. The current regulation basically just says a bicycle rack must be provided within, I think it's two hundred feet of the entryway.
Non-residential entryways.
High use.
It says non-residential entryways.
But it's also a bit discretionary, right?
Yeah. And there is no, there is no long-term bike parking required in the current regulation. So what these developers at Forty Seventh Flat Street are doing is just sort of on their own discretion to provide these ten spaces. So what I'm showing here is basically if you were to adopt local motions regulation as proposed, it would require seventeen long-term spaces. Now, you all could say, that seems like too much, and in that case, you could scale back, right? You could say, we're going to require instead of one space per unit, point seven-five spaces per unit. Point being, this is all scalable to get to a point where you all feel is appropriate. You have a one percent-ish bike mode share in your community right now, but you're building a lot of bike infrastructure, so it's probably going to rise. I think part of the idea here is to get an ordinance in place or a regulation in place so that you don't wind up with the town in the same situation that's in right now in the urban center where you're like, okay, we don't have enough bike parking. Now the town has to carry that cost, do a study and figure out where to put it. The idea here is to not repeat that situation in other parts of town by ensuring that developers are building the bike parking. So this is the short-term bike parking equation. Fifteen residential units with three at two-bedroom apartments comes out to three short-term spaces. Again, those would be basically outside of the building for visitors, and then the office space would require two short-term spaces. So a total of five short-term spaces. It doesn't look like any are planned. That basically comes out to three hoop racks, which is probably around seven hundred bucks for the racks itself. And it looks like there's this space next to the stair entry where those three hoop racks could very easily be installed. Those would take up a space of about ten by six. So that's, that's probably all of the most remain information to making this decision. I've got, you know, basically some guiding questions here. If you want to think about these or if you want to think about other questions, I'm happy to answer them and continue the discussion. I certainly think there's a good balance to be struck here, but, you know, between requiring some amount of long-term and short-term bike parking, striking the amenities and maybe working through those ratios to get to that right amount of bike parking.
Sarah, you haven't commented or questioned, had any questions for this item yet. Do you have anything to say at this point?
Not as of yet. I was not, I think, at the November meeting when this first was discussed, so I'm currently soaking it all in.
I'll share. It's not really a question, but kind of where I'm leaning on some things. You know, I think there's a lot of things to consider, the current requirement in some of the districts under the major site plan where, you know, it has to be two hundred feet away, a rack has to be placed. You know, and there's the short-term minimums and long-term minimums, not even going to consider amenities. There's in section three eleven dot E about site design, there's the encouragement that bike rack should be covered whenever feasible. There's the concept of the, you know, urban center being treated differently than the other districts, right? Like we provide car parking or we don't have currently car parking, that's an exception in that district. And we have a feeling that the, that we have a lot more control there because the town owns a lot of the land and the sidewalks. And then there's the thinking about, you know, staff, the part of Jonathan's proposals thus far that staff has seemed to be in favor of, and maybe we are all easily in favor of too, is the rack style performance standards and the site design standards. So now working backwards, I'll say, I'm definitely in favor of those things as well, what Jonathan proposed for the, you know, with maybe the wall racks and, you know, and other things we can adjust. But the, you know, the performance standards of the racks and the site design standards. And regarding the urban center, you know, I think our town plan and the walk bike plan and what Steve has offered in memos that, you know, those things all combined say that, you know, there's a deficiency in bicycle parking and the public wants more there and bike storage. And that's a very public realm, so I feel like within the urban center district, that should be a project of town government for implementing short-term bike parking. And not put any of that onus on businesses or, sorry, property owners unless they voluntarily want to. I do think that we should add some bike parking short-term minimums outside the urban center. I think, you know, if we're talking about, you know, which I am sensitive to and recognize that, you know, it's hard for a lot of developments to pencil out, whether that's housing or, you know, commercial aspects that the community needs. And anything additional that we add could make it impossible. I mean, we have all these standards for aesthetics that no one's talking about getting rid of. I think, you know, addressing something has to do with health and people's, you know, ability to get around and, you know, fossil fuel and climate impact is much more important than the aesthetics of buildings. But yet we put those big costs and we're not talking about removing those in general. So I feel like we should add short-term minimums and, but the way we have it now in like five of our districts, as just a rack needs to be provided two hundred feet away, that doesn't take into account the type of use. You know, like an educational facility. You know, like an educational facility has a requirement to have one rack. A fuel station, a fueling station has a requirement for one rack. I mean, I think that's, that's a real mismatch. So I think we should come up with some system based on land use. Um, maybe based off the, one of the previous memos that staff provided, based off our car parking minimums or, or lessen that ratio. So yeah, I mean, it's a lot to, it's a lot to say, but those are five notes of, of where I'm leaning right now.
Is it fair to say, Dan, that, that there could be a motion that we all agree that there needs to be a minimum bike parking standard? And I'm trying to work with what you said, Dan. And then the next step would be to filter out the things we generally agree are extraneous, like the showers and the the changing room and work through those details about, okay. You know, which, uh.
The details will absolutely have to come later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we all agree that there should be a minimum bike parking standard. Or at least I could move that there be.
You could.
We establish it, I move, okay, so we'll do it. I move that, that we establish a minimum bike parking standard with the details to be worked out in subsequent meetings.
So I'll, can I offer?
Yeah, because I don't know what the hell.
Yeah, so I'd say arguably we do have already a bike parking minimum and it's that 200, you know, that a rack must be provided in five of the districts if major site plan applies. So would your motion need to, um, say like increased?
Hey, Dan, rather than me trying to figure out what you really want, why don't you make the motion?
Uh, well, I, I would not, uh, well, actually, um, I, I wouldn't be making that motion. I, I, I have more of a, uh, I, I actually really wanted, I want Jonathan to chime in because he has his hand raised, but I actually really wanted Steve to perhaps summarize some of the main points from his memo as well to, to contribute to this.
Okay. And I'll, I'll drop it.
Who do you want to go first, Dan?
Jonathan has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to offer, you know, it, it seems like there are sort of three elements here that are under consideration. The locker rooms and showers are out, right? That's totally fine. That makes sense. I think the remaining three primary things are the, the design standards, which it seems like there's broad support for from the staff and from the commissioners. And then whether or not to require short-term bike parking and whether or not to require long-term bike parking in some amount.
Okay, I, I like how that's framed.
Okay, I, I mean, in other words, to, to dictate that we make the distinction between short-term and long-term, the design standards are going to be different for short-term and long-term. Okay, I'm supportive of that.
Oh, no, just, just that our current regs don't have design standards.
Then we would have to create them.
So, yeah, do we want to add them to our regs more or less based off what Jonathan has proposed, Eric?
And then we, we need to hear from Steve as well.
Well, yeah.
Actually, I'm sorry, before Steve gets into it, I really do want to hear from Steve, but I, what I was raising my hand before about, uh, is, uh, just to raise a point, uh, since Jonathan brought in forty seven Flat Street, it's just worth noting, if you're not aware, Tom and I did a tour there. Uh, you know, that, that building was not uh, solely a private development as far as, you know, the, so looking at the, if, if that's your model, Jonathan, uh, it's, it's worth bringing up that that's not sort of your typical multifamily development, you know, type of situation. Uh, in other words, they got, they got, it's not a private development entirely. So anyway, uh, so the money that went into that, I don't know what happened with, you know, how they decided to put a ten, ten bar, ten, uh, space, uh, room in there, but it was that I'm sure there's more to it than just the, the ratio of people to bikes or something like that. Just to bring that up, sorry. Uh, but, uh, but, uh, Steve, I really did want to hear more about, uh, or summary of the memo.
Sounds good to me too, Steve, if you go through the important points, if you feel like, you know, maybe they haven't been, um, recognized for something enough.
I mean, uh, did anyone have any, any questions specifically about any point in the memo? I, I'm aware of the time that we're at. I don't want to bog us down.
Well, I don't know.
I think, I think from a high level, like, we are not supportive of of short-term and long-term minimum standards because we are not, we think there's other ways to go about getting that mode shift. And so the extra cost of, of developing, you know, specifically kind of moving along and, you know, having it as a requirement. We're kind of moving away from those things, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the the elevator pitch version is that, um, there really is not a, a data case for parking minimums, be they for cars or for bikes. Uh, that, that has always been the case ever since the, the concept was, was invented for, for car parking minimums. It's really a preference statement and what it is, is that it's a preference for an excess of that thing, uh, because it is mandating that more than would be built by market, uh, functions be built. And so, you know, if it's actually in need and we have that level of biking in the community, it stands to reason that it will be built as an amenity by the, uh, developments that would like to build it as an amenity. Um, like, I, I'm not sure that Flat Street, uh, actually built out with bike parking. Um, but, you know, that would be an example of a market decision to provide bike parking without being required to. Um, and, you know, if we still find that we have a preference for more, uh, we as the town can find out where we would need it most and provide that. Uh, rather than having that be required of, of developments as they, uh, as they come up. Um, which would, would not uh, guarantee that, that things are actually distributed where we need them to be. Um, and so, you know, there, there is data to to, uh, show that when car parking minimums or other ways that, uh, automobile trans- transportation is, you know, in, in essence subsidized, whether it's actually subsidized or it is indirectly subsidized with things like a a parking minimum, uh, or, you know, free parking, uh, on street. There are, there are various ways that that is made artificially more convenient, more cost-effective, uh, and more time-effective than it otherwise would be, uh, particularly in urban environments. And so when, uh, the, the case study here in Portland, Oregon, which I understand has, uh, a, a different level of, of bike parking regulation than what's being proposed. Uh, when they made the choice to decrease that effective subsidy that they were adding to driving cars, they found that a substantially larger number of people chose to ride bikes because that was a decision that they made uh, based on what was most convenient to them. So if we are taking mode switch, uh, and, and five percent as a, as a success metric, and we want to see that happen, it's, it stands to reason the, the things that we would need to do to get that are much more on the side of making it less car-friendly in this town or, or, you know, not adding so many things that are basically subsidies to driving a car rather than having additional bike party. Um, you know, bike infrastructure is, uh, as, as Jonathan mentioned, another large part of the equation as to whether people would bike or not. Um, but we, we don't have nearly as much bike infrastructure as we do, of course, car infrastructure, even though we are making an effort to do that. Uh, essentially, I, I, I don't think that we see a need to require this, uh, especially not at, at this particular time. Um, but the specifically, uh, this, this doesn't come from, uh, the, the case of, um, forty seven Flat Street. Uh, it is worth pointing out as well that that was a National Register Historic Places project, uh, that got historic preservation tax credits. So while we don't deal with the inside of buildings, uh, those tax credits do, and that project, well, it really shouldn't have penciled out on number of occasions and they were able to, to get help from, um, partners that, that, uh, wanted to help them make that project pencil anyways. Um, so it's not a particularly uh, apt example of, of what, what could happen. Uh, but if you alter the fabric of the building inside, uh, which, which may well include, uh, creating bike rooms inside, that risks potentially having that funding pulled. And that's not something that we work with, but it's, these things can have other impacts, uh, and I don't imagine that us providing bike racks outside of the building as the town would have any such, uh, potential consequence.
Steve, so there's things that we can do in the urban center as, as a, a town government, um, to provide bike parking, but what about the other developed districts? The town government has very little controlled land, right? In the other districts. Is that incorrect or mixed-use neighborhood center, service center, waterfront?
I think, um, we, we could approach businesses with bike racks if that was something that the.
Okay, so, so a hybrid model could, could move forward.
I think there are places where there is on-street parking in, in other parts of town that perhaps would be supported to do that.
I, I also think we are getting movement with bike racks. I think McDonald's, when they redeveloped Burger King, you know, we are requiring bike racks. I think eight or two the marketplace, you know, I think there are bike racks going in. It's, so I, I think the regulation that we have is being utilized. It's, do we need to specify how many bike racks are going in? Or let them, them figure it out? I think we're comfortable with the way it is. I think there is a gap in the residential, you know.
Mixed-use.
For, for multifamily. Personally, I think there's a little gap there. Um, but are we going to begin to require the long-term and the short-term?
So we have limited time left and, um, certainly it's, it's kind of hard to know how to move forward with all the different parts and how to, how to take them individually or vote, you know, so I, regardless, I think this needs to be saved for another time, but I think Jonathan may have more to say and like, I mean, we, I think we definitely have to talk about the downtown transportation fund grant, right? Because there's a deadline, so we need the 10 minutes for that, unless people want to vote to go beyond 8:00 PM. And if any of you do speak up, um, at any point, and we'll, we'll take the vote in our bylaws for that to go past eight. Um, but I think we'll skip the certified local government. We'll do seven fifty to eight for the downtown transportation fund grant. But there's also a member of the public here, Ruth's iPad, I think, and Ruth, I don't know, or Ruth's iPad. I don't know if you want to speak to this agenda item or just a general public comment period, which we'll do at the very end of the meeting. Um, Ruth's iPad, if you want to chime in, but you don't have to, but now's your chance about this agenda item. Okay. Yeah, but Jonathan, um, you know, because I think we're going to talk about this again, but maybe we just need to, you know, we won't necessarily invite you, Jonathan, but you can come as a member of, you know, of the public, because all our meetings are open, but and then we just, you know, need to have more discussion about this at a future meeting, but you know, the next, next several minutes are yours if you want, or you, you can ask to keep taking questions, whatever you'd like.
No, I think, uh, it's been a lot of good discussion tonight. You know, I just want to, I think, reiterate that all of this is scalable, you know, you can, you can tweak the ratios to get to a point that feels comfortable to you. Um, you could say this doesn't apply to the urban center if you think that it's going to be more of a hindrance to development there as opposed to outside of it. Um, so there are lots of ways to, I think, address a lot of the concerns that are being raised here.
Okay, yeah, John, John.
All I would ask is, is that for the net, I've, I've been now two or three of these discussions. All I would ask for the next time is that we narrow the focus of what we're trying to decide. I thought Dan's comment was really pertinent. And if we hadn't, you know, I thought we were going to do minimum parking standards and then staff said they didn't think minimum parking standards were necessary. Um, as long as we just narrow the conversation so that we, we know what we're trying to come out of the next discussion with, that would be very helpful for me. Because there are a lot of things and, you know, to wander back and forth through.
Yeah.
All, all of the.
It's hard sometimes because sometimes I'm looking for, you know, commissioners, you know, inclinations, you know, or not inclinations, but, you know, for, for a general sense of the commission to, to move forward with guidance. You know, I think when I see like the way a lot of select board meetings go, not that we're the same body, but you know, a lot of times it's all different department heads coming with a proposal and a suggestive recommendation and then asking them to say yes or no to it. Because they're so high level, but we're not so high level.
I would have said, hey, let's do minimum parking standards and figure out the details, except right after we said that, staff came back and said, we, we really don't think we need minimum parking.
Well, we don't have to agree with staff.
No, but it would be nice to have a discussion that focuses on doing the minimum parking standard or not, as opposed to all at least.
If you want to see minimum parking standards, we can take a crack at it for March, I mean, maybe having something.
We kind of did.
Yes, Steve.
That in December. I mean, we also did that with the caveat of saying, we don't think this should be moved forward in this way, but, uh, but, but we did, you know, I think it was the December meeting. Come with a look at how would this be incorporated into our existing parking standards?
Yeah, so anyway, just to finish my comment, I, I don't necessarily want to drive the, let's, this is what we should discuss next time, as long as, I just think we should have something that we can come out and say, hey, we, we move the state forward.
We'll work on that.
Thank you.
I think that's, that's good.
And I got rid of the bathrooms, which was really my good deal. Changing rooms and all that.
Yeah, maybe that sounds good to Sarah and Dan at this point to really come next time, not, not with an open-ended discussion again, but something much more, um, much more, you know, yes or no, and then based off if we say yes, then work on details after the yes. I see a nod. Okay. Um, great, let's, um, thank you, Jonathan, again for coming and providing the materials. Um, let's move on to the downtown transportation fund grant. On slip, staff, um, present this.
So this is, um, the downtown transportation funds grant is something that town staff has been working on and, um, it requires support from the planning commission and the select board. So these are grants of up to $200,000 with a 20% match. We've been looking at updating the parking system in downtown, um, moving away from the, uh, single parking meters. Um, we're having a lot of damage to them, whether it's by vehicles or vandalism, and so they don't look very good. Um, and it's not the most modern of parking systems, so, um, we know that whatever we do is going to come with a price tag, and so we wanted to take advantage of this grant to um, purchase, I think it's nine kiosks that would be, um, placed on the sidewalk, kind of clean up the sidewalks, uh, make it easier for people to plow and, and whatnot, um, just make it look nicer, um, and do these pay-by-plate systems. So that's, that's what this grant is about, so.
So we need to, to formally vote on you moving forward with applying for that grant?
A recommendation that, that this is, I'm just trying to think. There is something that the planning commission.
Is there any reason why we want to think about doing it before we told, uh, we made a motion to move you, move forward on it? I mean, are there any potential cons?
I mean, at this point, right, the deadline's in, you know, before our next meeting. So, 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 so if we say no, then we just lose out on the opportunity.
I would, we recommend that they move forward on it.
Okay, is, I mean, we'll, we'll have discussion after the second. Is there a second?
In the spirit of getting us out of here.
Yeah, Sarah is, okay. Sarah's second. I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. We, we know who's running for a chair here come June. Um, nah.
Last man back.
I guess, um, so are, did, um, all the staff members involved in this grant, did, um, uh, is this something, it has to go to the select board as well for their approval, right? And their sign-off on it?
Yes.
Is this something that they're seeing for the very first time, or were they kind of involved in deciding what the, the topic of this, the project would be?
They were not involved in the project.
Yeah, okay. Because, um, I just think sometimes it would be nice before like the deadline looms imminently if, when, when staff is thinking of an idea, if it comes to us like a couple of months in advance, so we can weigh in. Because even if we have changes that we recommend to it now, it's, it's pretty much too late, right? Or, I mean, you guys have.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Sometimes these.
Yeah, we can't, we can't change anything.
Sometimes these pop up and it's like, oh, we should take advantage of it, but.
And we're not going to say no to two, you know, $200,000, I mean, prove.
I think it's not.
But.
I mean, if you have ideas that you.
Yeah.
I I'm just, I got Gideon over the top, not having to say quarters when I went.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so some questions I have, not necessarily in order of importance, but I think I think just quick answers. The the current meters are just like two or three years old, right? They were just replaced, they were cash and then they went to some credit card.
It's more than two or three years. I think it was done in like 2019.
Okay.
Twenty twenty, maybe 2018, and they were replaced so that you could do a card.
Or an app.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so um, so there's a lot less money in them now, right, than there used to be? Or maybe they're the the money's collected less frequently because it just takes waits until it fills up.
I I don't, I don't know, but I know that they are.
Do the kiosks ever get stolen? And.
I'm not aware that our kiosks have been stolen.
It's never happened, yeah. Um, all right, when people park and if they're new to the area, uh, is there going to be a sign like at every parking space telling them where to go?
Not at every parking spaces. There there are going to be signs.
Every so often along the streets is what I mean after parking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and the street uh, the street um, parking kiosks will use the app as well, right?
Yes.
Because I I only had a chance to like mention this to a couple of friends and and one of them's older. And they said, oh, you know, this is something where, you know, old people are going to walk even farther. Yeah, there's the ADA parking spaces, but, you know, people have to walk to a kiosk and back. But no, because it's pay-by-plate, first of all, and it's also, once they know about the app, then they only have to walk to the kiosk in the first place.
Correct, yeah, you don't have to go back with a ticket.
Yeah.
I mean, what I do in other cities, I snap and my license plates, I can't remember.
Now, another thing is that when I looked at the Downtown Transportation Fund grant, there's different ways of interpreting the policy, you know, the the purpose of the grant. But it seems to me like it's supposed to be a little bit more towards like multimodal and bicycle and pedestrian. And so like, as far as another project, I would have loved, you know, some downtown bicycle parking for this money to go to. But there's always next year. But what about with all the freed up space by removing parking meters? We put in an actual bench or two on the sidewalks for pedestrians. Because there is, there are no benches on the streets downtown.
I can't commit to that.
Can that be worked in? Okay, thank you. Um, that's all, I guess benches is what I'm asking for. To make the to make the sidewalk, you know, a place to hang out.
We used to.
There's a right there.
Yeah, we used to have them and then there was issues, but.
Just in County Park, I think.
Yeah, they're in parks, but they're not, there's none along sidewalks. So and outside, right outside businesses or the ice cream place, whatever. Um, Dan, Dan and Sarah, if you want to comment.
Yeah, uh, my only question is, uh, I'm I'm all for replacing the 147 meters, by the way. Uh, but my only question is, would this be, would the scope include the possibility of of increasing the number of spaces, such as converting the two-hour uh, parking spaces to to metered spaces or anything like that? Or are we just talking about replacing the 147 meters and those spaces?
Um, so it's actually going to reduce. We have a couple of parking meters up by the Commons and on Flat Street. And the idea there is that would be free, free two-hour parking.
Right, so you'd convert some of the, sorry, you'd actually, you'd be doing the reverse. You'd be converting some of the existing metering, metered parking to free parking.
Mm-hmm.
That's the idea? Okay.
Be too time limited, but yes, free.
Yeah, yeah, two uh, two hours, I think. Okay.
Um, this is.
We're not talking about the, we're not, we're not talking about using this to expand the metered parking.
No.
Okay.
Actually, we do so.
Sarah, anything? From you?
No, I think it's a good idea and we'll support moving forward.
Okay, well, that's something. Um, so let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's the two on Zoom and John?
Oh, yes, sir.
And the two here. Great.
Thank you.
So I have to sign that, that's important.
Yeah.
Um, you don't have it here with you, do you? Oh, great. Um, okay, well, we didn't complete our business and we're not going to do it in the remaining two minutes. Certified local government, so do that next time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
Public comment.
Oh, well, I kind of, oh, yeah, I forgot. Yeah, um, public comment period. Ruth's iPad, if you're a member of the public, which is pretty much everyone um, in existence, feel free to to comment about any agenda item or just anything in the planning commission's purview. All right, well, thanks for attending nonetheless, and a motion to adjourn. Here, we got one.
I'm adjourned.
John does, and um, I forget how the motion to adjourn, probably the same way. Is there a second? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone. Okay. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.